Okay, okay. All right, looks like we're all prepared and ready to go. We appreciate all of you being here with us today and appreciate our technology and our experts over here making sure that this meeting is accessible to those who would like to participate by way of our YouTube channel, so we're grateful for that. We'll go ahead and begin our meeting. Today is Tuesday, the third day of November 2015. We'll begin with our invocation offered by Commissioner Bell, our pledge of allegiance offered led today by Cortland Erickson, and our thought of the day by Commissioner Gibson. Commissioner Bell?
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for all of our many blessings and the opportunity we have to meet here as a county with citizens and to make decisions to help make this county a better place for all of us to live. And we're thankful that we have the blessings of being here and to have our voices heard. And we thank thee for all these many blessings in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please stand and repeat the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thought of the day today comes to us from one of our old reliable emails that come through every day. Try not to use Bob's every day, but every time I have the thought, but this one, you know, he does a good one and there's a lot of material there. Appreciate Bob sending these to us. He tends to have a way of kind of hitting on some of the things that I'm thinking about. But as I think about some of the things we're challenges that we're facing as a commission and some of the unique and innovative things that we have embarked on, this one kind of got my attention. This particular thought got my attention. It's by an American, an Indian-American author and public speaker named Deepak Chopra, and he says this, "Every time that you are tempted to react in the same old way, ask yourself if you want to be a prisoner of the past or a pioneer of the future." And as I have, as I looked at that and thought about that a little bit, I thought to myself what my, what the majority, what I feel like the majority of my constituents would want me to do. And I believe that they want us to act appropriately, of course, at all times, but that they also want us to constantly be looking for better ways to do things, for opportunities that will be appropriate for them in the future as well as for each and every one of us, whether we choose to participate or not. And so this one is one that I just want to express my gratitude to the commission and to our constituents who allow us to do these things, who empower us to lead on their behalfs. And we pray and continue to hope that as we do those things, that we do them in a measured and appropriate manner where there's very little risk to our constituents, but by the same token that we're always just looking for the better way, a better way to do things. So my hope is that we'll be, do our best to be pioneers of the future so that our grandkids and children have a brighter future to live in. So that's my thought for the day. We will move then to our consent items. There is one change on item number two. The number is slightly different than what is listed there. That's the only change on the consent items. Before we start the consent items though, I would like to mention to everyone that we will have a request at the end of the meeting. It's not on the agenda, but we're told that the staff that we should have a closed session to discuss strategy relating to pending or imminent litigation. So we'll ask for that before we adjourn our meeting. So Cortland, we'll just take a motion to that effect when that happens. Is that appropriate? Okay, so that's the only adjustment that I'm aware of to the agenda. So we'll move to our consent items. Item number one is a request for approval of purchase orders in the amount of eighty thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Request for approval of warrants, number three-two-six-three-seven-seven through three-two-six-seven-three-seven in the amount of one million eleven thousand forty-six dollars and four, excuse me, that's the old amount. The new one is one million ten thousand nine hundred six dollars and nineteen cents. And maybe Shelley, you can tell us what the adjustment is.
It was one forty, forty-five, minus one forty-two.
Okay, all right, so that's an adjustment to the, to a warrant. Request for approval of minutes held on October twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh of 2015. Request for approval of new business licenses. Request from the Weber County Tax Review Committee for approval to refund one hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents to Rick Mail for an error in square footage on parcel number zero-seven dash four-two-six dash zero-zero-zero-eight. Request for approval of a severance agreement by and between Weber County and Gary Laird. Request for approval to set the date, the date of November seventeenth of 2015 at six P.M. for a public hearing to take input on the Weber County 2016 budget. Request for approval to set the date of November seventeenth, 2015 at six P.M. for a public hearing to take input on a proposed interfund loan between the Transportation Development Fund and the Public Works Fund for the purpose of completing capital projects. Request for approval to set the date of December first, 2015 at ten A.M. for a public hearing to amend the Weber County Land Use Code Title 104, Zones Chapter 11, Commercial Value Resort Recreation Zone or CVR-1. Section four, conditional uses by adding brew pub and reception banquet facilities as conditional uses. Weber County Land Use Code Title 101, General Revisions, Section 101 dash seven dash seven, where definitions is also being amended by adding a definition for brew pub. Request for approval of an amendment by, to a contract by and between Weber County and Bowen and Collins and Associates for design related to construction support services. And request for approval of an amendment to a contract by and between Weber County and Utah Central Railway to allow Union Station to park cars on the track at the transfer station. Looks like that's it for the consent items. Commissioners, let's go to Ricky, our clerk auditor, to give us a brief rundown on the warrants and check register. Ricky?
Thank you, Sheriff Gibson, and happy election day to you. Looks like our turnout currently is about thirty percent countywide across the city, so good turnout and lots of good, good things happening. As far as purchase orders and checks, for our purchase orders, we wrote twenty-nine purchase orders this week for eighty-one thousand dollars. They were split primarily among four main categories. Twenty-three percent or nineteen thousand went to the library for supplies. Twenty percent or sixteen thousand was for the Health Department for HVAC system software. Sixteen percent or thirteen thousand is for the Recreation Department primarily for food supplies. And fourteen percent or eleven thousand went to the landfill for supplies and fuel. As far as checks go, we wrote three hundred and sixty-one checks this week for one million dollars. Eighteen percent or one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is for Public Works and it was for projects up at Hidden Lake and Summit. Twelve percent or one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars is for the jail and that was spread across food, uniforms, utilities, and a few other items. Eleven percent or one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars was for the library for architectural work and computers. Another eleven percent or one hundred and nine thousand was for equipment, equipment maintenance and debris removal at the landfill. Nine percent or eighty-six thousand dollars went to Weber Housing Authority and that was for monthly housing payments. Six percent or fifty-nine thousand was corridor preservation, which was split evenly between the Thirty-Five Hundred West and the 12th Street projects. And then finally, five percent or fifty-three thousand dollars was for computer equipment for our IT department.
Great. It was a long check run this time, a little bit bigger than normal and a long consent item list as well. Commissioners, anything on those list of consent items that you have questions on, concerns, comments, anything you'd like to pull off and debate? Okay, action?
I'll make a motion. We accept the consent items as read.
Second. Okay, motion and second then on the floor to adopt and approve those consent items is their discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? It passes. To our action items, got a pretty good list of these too today, so we'll work through them. Item number one is request for approval of an interlocal agreement by and between Weber County and the Redevelopment Agency of North Ogden City to define terms of the community development project. I know Kent Bailey is here from the city. Commissioner Ebert, are you going to present this or would you like Kent to or a tag team of both?
No, I was going to have Mr. Larson from our EDP.
Larson, come on up.
Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
Pleasure as always. Again, before you have an interlocal agreement between Weber County and the Redevelopment Agency of North and Ogden City, which creates effectively the Washington Boulevard Community Development Project area plan, if you will. This is a fifteen-year agreement. They're asking Weber County as a taxing entity to participate at, I'll label this, at fifty percent over that fifty, fifteen-year period. That fifty percent, of course, is fifty percent of the new tax, property tax that's created as a, as a result of the anticipated development that will occur within the area. Specific to the project area, there are various pockets, but essentially runs along Washington Boulevard from twenty-six hundred north, south to about seventeen hundred north. Nearly all of the development in the project area is retail, office, commercial, or vacant land. The estimated population in the project area is less than a hundred people currently. The project area plan contemplates the addition of a senior living facility with a hundred and forty beds as well as an apartment and townhouse development with three hundred and twenty-two units. An increase, of course, in residential density will provide more rooftops to support commercial development. Proposed, I'd note also that the proposed development anticipates adding nearly seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet of residential, commercial, and additional space. The need for participating, extraordinary costs of development discourage development currently. One thing that our office particularly likes about this plan is primarily the tax increment will be utilized as an investment in infrastructure, specifically the relocation of storm detention basins, demolitions of existing structures, road improvements to facilitate development bearing of county, of power lines and county islands disrupt distribution of development costs. So with that, their anticipated costs for, to move this forward are just over eight million tax increment. Among all of the participating entities will accumulate to about five point four million over the fifteen-year period. Currently, the tax generated within the proposed area specific to Weber County generates about sixty-nine thousand dollars a year. They're anticipating at the end of the fifteen-year term with the development that's anticipated as a result of this participation, the tax to Weber County will increase to over two hundred thousand dollars a year. So in short, fifteen-year agreement will be participating at fifty percent of the new tax that's generated.
The sixty-nine thousand is Weber County portion?
Just Weber County's portion currently. And I'd also like to note for the record, this is a technical aspect, but it's good to have in the public record that the base year value is sixteen million nine hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and eleven with a base year of 2014. So the new, the tax increment is based on the taxable value generated over and above that base year value. So we'll continue to collect what we're already collecting. We're just giving away a portion of what we're not currently getting.
What's the percentage of that increase that we give up?
Fifty percent.
Okay, commissioners, questions? Can you come on up? Anything you'd like to add from the perspective of the city? Now, this is, this is all within the boundaries of North Ogden City?
Yes.
Correct?
Did, one question, Dick. Did we have some islands in there that we fixed with this or not? Did we have some, we have lots of islands in North Ogden. Did we fix some islands with this?
You mean in the unincorporated islands?
Yes.
That's a different, that's a whole different.
But that's not part of any, we haven't fixed any of those.
No, sir. This doesn't deal with that.
Are they, are there any of those within the CDA area?
There, there are not within the boundaries of the CDA, any, any of the county islands. They are kind of gerrymandered around the county islands specific to that. I'm sure we'll be coming back to you at some future time as, as development occurs or proposed development occurs in some of those areas to maybe look at, look at including them or adding them to the CDA or looking at a future CDA. But everything that we're proposing with this agreement is solely within the boundaries of, of North Ogden City. I, the only thing that I would add to what has been, has already been presented is that with, with the county's share of the increment, the fifty percent split for the fifteen years, the county wins in both cases. I mean, as long as the, as long as we, as development moves forward, the county will get no less than what they're already getting and stands to earn or stands to gain during the period of the CDA as the property values increase and then certainly after the fifteen year period of the CDA when the property values, we hope, are significantly higher than they are as this development occurs. So there's, there's no, no way you can lose, the county can lose in this process. So we think it's a good deal for, for all the entities that will, that are, that are going to be involved in this, so.
So I, as I, as I, as I look through this and I'm a little familiar with it, you guys are doing some great things out there. I was just talking to Councilman Bailey about the opening of their, the indoor soccer. They put in the old Macy's, was it?
The old Macy's. That building sat idle for more than ten years.
Yeah, and it was, wow, there was just a ton of people out there and a lot of things going on, so kudos to North Ogden. You guys are doing some great things and getting aggressive out there and, and Weber County has so many things to offer, so we appreciate you, what you're doing, and we want to help you along and be a partner with you where we can.
That complex of buildings there by the Macy's building is all part of this, well, yeah.
Right. Yeah, that's exciting. I, I think you're, you guys are doing great, so. So let your mayor know and your city that we want to help you where we can.
Thank you.
Can you talk to us a little bit about the CDA? Looks like you've got some, some information to present.
I have specifically, Councilman, or Commissioner Ebert, do you have a specific question about the CDA or about who the?
So in talking to the mayor, there were some developments that we're looking at coming in. There were seemingly some conditional agree, not conditional agreements, but concerns with the CDA and how that would help them move for infrastructure or development. Could you talk to, to us about those developments?
We do have, there are a number of things that we're working on. I, my, my hat off to Mayor Taylor, who has been very aggressive in, in his economic development efforts. We do have a project that, that we've been working with. In fact, I've been on one of the, on one of the committees, a multi-use project at the corner of Seventeen Hundred North and Washington Boulevard. There are thirty acres in there, eight acres of that are under development or we've already approved for development for the, the assisted living center. We have extended Seventeen Hundred North already, west of Washington Boulevard. We haven't opened that yet, but developer has, has developed that or has, has improved that road, put the, pushed that road into the Mystery Meadow subdivision, which goes, which is directly west of Seventeen Hundred North. We're working with a developer, I just had early meetings with him earlier this week on a mixed-use project, which will encompass sixteen acres that are in the city right now with a three hundred and twenty-two unit mixed-use project. We'll have some commercial development on Washington Boulevard and the, and the area behind it. This is all, this is all planned community. We're very excited about this one. We're, again, we're in the, we're still in the talking phases. We haven't approved anything on this yet because we've just been waiting for the developer to bring us back. We're in the process of developing a development agreement with them. We've actually created a new multi, what do we call that, Brian? A multi, it's an MPC zone for, so we had to have, had to create, be a little bit creative in how our zoning works to allow some of the things that will take place in this, including higher property densities, greater building heights, roadways coming through the, through the development, which don't meet our city public works standard, but there are going to be private roadways that they'll, that the, and, and one of the things that we're insisting on is that this be wholly owned by and managed professionally rather than it be broken up into individual tax entities. So the intent is, is that we want it to be a high-class, what they call a top-tier property now and on into the future. Where there are other things that are a little bit pie in the sky right now, a lot of discussions going on with others, but nothing that has really begun to gel. We've had some that have been brought to the table and then they kind of disappear and so, but we're excited about the, if you've seen the, the, that section of Washington Boulevard has gotten pretty blighted over the last number of years. It's all been zoned commercial for years and years. One of our concerns is that, well, of course, it's certainly not looking well for North Ogden City. It doesn't, it doesn't represent our city well. There are, there are vacant properties along there that we've actually just changed ordinances to give us some power to move in and demolish and come back on the, because we, we've had a difficult time getting property owners to move on those. So we're excited about the potential of what this can do for making North Ogden City and the city center of North Ogden City look and be much more attractive to the kind of commercial development we think is, is, is available and will come to our city. So we appreciate your.
I noticed you had someone else with you from the city and I apologize, I can't remember your name.
This is Brian Steele. Brian Steele is our.
From the city council as well.
No, he's, he is our city finance director, so he's the one that knows all the numbers, so.
Did he want to add anything else, Brian? Okay.
If I can just say really quickly, we appreciate, we held this one week because we wanted to have all the details really mapped out and on paper. So we were going to look at it last week, but we had a couple of things and so we've managed to work our way through that and we appreciate you working with us to make sure we could get it all lined out. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I, you know, as far as the CDAs are concerned, commissioners, you know, they're, we, we see these quite frequently from time to time and obviously it's a controversial subject every now and then when we, you know, CDAs are loved by some, hated by some, and a whole bunch in between. And, you know, as far as principles that, that I kind of try to follow as I look at these, first of all, I think it's important that the community in which the CDA is, is happening is, is well-informed and, and desire us to have us move forward. It seems like that's the case in this particular case, at least from what we're hearing from the elected representatives. We appreciate that. We want to remind every time that this is real money, that, that we're giving up in possible income coming forward. In this particular case, it looks like a good investment to me. And, and that, you know, we can invest in CDAs as long as we have money to invest. You know, there are times when, when things may be tied enough that, that we can't, but in this particular case, it looks like a fair investment. We're looking at, on the Weber County portion, as Douglas mentioned, was a sixty-nine thousand dollar increase to over two hundred thousand over a period of time and that's always a positive thing. And then, you know, I think it's always important to just remember the long-term effects and look at the, at the plan to see if it's a plan that, that is sustainable over the long term and not one that's going to fizzle before the CDA happens. And it seems like that's the case in this particular case as well. So it feels like a fairly well-thought, a well-thought-out proposal and I'm grateful to the city council for bringing it forward to us. Commissioners, do you have other comments or, or opinions on that? How would you like to move forward?
I think it's a good thing. I think that as we do these, we did one not too long ago for South Ogden, and I think that's what helps these cities, gives them, gives them a way to get the infrastructure in. We want private business to come in, build the, build the businesses, but we, you need help to get the infrastructure in, to get the roads, to make sure that the utilities are there, that you can get the folks into their businesses that they're going to build there. And then we got that private money that comes in and so I think it's a great way to do it. It doesn't, it, it costs us a little bit in the future of revenues maybe we wouldn't get, but maybe we would do nothing in the future without this. So I think it's a great thing and I appreciate all our cities and what they're doing on that.
Three hundred and eighty-six?
Make a motion. We approve contract three eight, three eight six, an interlocal agreement by and between Weber County and the Redevelopment Agency of North Ogden City to define terms of community development project.
I second it.
Motion and second then to approve and adopt contract number three eighty-six. Discussion to the motion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. We hope you'll pass on our thanks to the, to the mayor and council and, and all the staff that's worked hard on this.
We'll do, thanks, Commissioner.
Good luck going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas.
Thank you.
Item number two, request for approval of a right-of-way contract by and between Weber County and the following for the Thirty-Five Hundred West project. This particular one, Mr. Anderson, is Michael and Nedra Atkinson, parcel number fifty-five. Any unique circumstances we should be aware of on this particular contract, Jared?
No.
Okay. Anything you'd like to share with us?
No, just glad they're able to get it signed and get it taken care of, so.
Okay, commissioners, how would you like to act?
I'll make a motion. We approve contract three eight seven on a right-of-way contract by and between Weber County and the following for the Thirty-Five Hundred West project, Michael and Nedra Atkinson's, parcel fifty-five.
I second it.
Okay, motion and second then to approve and adopt contract number three eighty-seven. Discussion to that motion. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Item number three is the same right-of-way contract by and between Weber County and the following on the 12th Street project, Dale and Ina's Penrod, Alan and Marie Barrow, Warren Irrigation Company. Jared, on these, anything unique or anything?
No, nothing unique, same as before, just good that they were able to get them signed and get them taken care of.
Okay. Commissioners?
Those will be contract number three eighty-eight to what?
Ninety.
To three ninety? I make a motion. We accept contracts three eighty-eight to three ninety for 12th Street project, for Penrod, Barrow, and Warren Irrigation Company.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second then, discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? It passes. Thank you, Jared. Appreciate that. Stay close. Item number four, Mr. Keller, if you'll work your way up to the microphone and read this, request for approval of a resolution of the county commissioners of Weber County approving proceedings in eminent domain as necessary for Skyline Drive reconstruction. And I think it's fair for me to, to point out, considering that we've been through one of these processes already, I'll just clarify what this actually does and then you can tell me, Mr. Keller, if I missed it. But, but this authorizes the, the use of eminent domain. This is not the action itself, correct? The action?
That is correct, Commissioner Gibson. That's, that's exactly right. I think you have the resolution in front of you. It is necessary under state law that the governing body of the county hold a public hearing where the property owners that are, that are affected by a potential action can speak, and that's what we're here for today. I think we should, we have three resolutions. The Skyline Drive is the first, just in terms of, to, to set the stage, I guess. I do want to emphasize, and I think this goes to your question, this authorizes the filing of a condemnation action at such time as it is determined to be necessary. It does not require the filing of an action. This is a necessary step the county has to go through. We've heard from many of the property owners who have said, you know, we're, we're finished negotiating, we're gonna, you're gonna have to condemn us. Other property owners are still negotiating, are still working with the Ombudsman's Office. Certainly, we don't want to condemn those property owners that are still willing to negotiate. The other issue that has come up and it's, I wanted to speak to is the question of when an eminent domain action can be filed. The law requires that before the, the filing of an action actually occurs, that construction be reasonably imminent, and that is determined by a judge. We would. imminent. And that is determined by a judge. We would certainly want to make sure with, with Jared and the, and the county staff that we had the funds and construction was reasonably imminent before we filed an action. So, that, those are all things that, that are in play here, but there's no question that the county can authorize the negotiations for the acquisition of right-of-way up to 30 years in the future, as long as it's voluntary. So, I'm here to assist with any legal questions either the, the property owners have or the commissioners that might come up. Jared Anderson's here and he will speak to technical issues and questions that come up. I recommend that each property owner be given, who wants to, who want to speak, be given three to five minutes at your discretion, Commissioner Gibson, and allow them to, to address the commission. So, with that, I would just turn, I would suggest that anyone on the 27, on the Skyline Drive project that, that is here that wants to address the commission be allowed to come forward.
Specifically, I think that's good counsel that we will, we will keep that to individuals who are affected in this particular action. So, in this particular case, having read in item number four on the agenda, this would be the Skyline Drive project. So, we'll, we'll leave that three to five. I'll kind of leave it up to you, try and keep it to three to be respectful to those others in the room, but I'm probably not going to make you sit down until five. We'll start the timer and just give you a little bit of a reminder if it gets going a little too long, okay? So, anyone from Skyline Drive on our resolution? It looks like there are three possible that could speak from Skyline Drive. Are any of them here today? Let's make sure I have their names.
They're not.
They're not, they're not on the resolution?
They're not here.
Nope.
They are on the resolution, but they're.
Right.
Right, okay.
So, yeah. So, so part of it is, is that, I mean, they've got some tentative agreements with our office on those and they're just not signed in ink yet.
It's a timing issue.
Yeah, it's just timing. He, you can talk about that, but we need to, we, we don't want to stop this project. We want to have this in place in case the other things don't work out, so.
Come on up, Jared. Why don't you give us a rundown of those three property owners?
Yeah, I just wanted to give the opportunity, if any of those residents were here. There's currently three that are remaining on Skyline. Scott Waterfall, he has, he's ready to sign the contract. Him and his wife are out of town. So, they're going to be in town on the 16th of November, agreed to all the terms, and they're going to be signing that contract. The other two parcels, they're both going through the ombudsman and working on a value of the property. So, none of them are against the project. It's just finishing up those remaining items they needed to negotiate and trying to get the best value out of their property.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, this is a resolution. If there's no one else who wants to speak, would you like to take action on the resolution?
42.
Make a motion, we accept.
What, number 42?
42. I'll make a motion, we accept resolution number 42 for approving proceedings in eminent domain action on Skyline Drive reconstruction if necessary.
Second.
Okay, motion is second to approve and adopt this contract, number, or this resolution, number 42. Is there any further discussion from the commission? Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. To item number five, request for approval of a resolution of the county commissioners approving the proceedings of eminent domain as necessary for the 3500 West reconstruction. I don't know if Mr. Keller has anything else to add that would be different. If not, we will ask if there are any from 3500 West project who would like to come up and speak. The number, Jared, how many are there left on that one? About five, okay? Anybody here from 3500 West of those five individuals who would like to speak? Okay, Jared, why don't you come up and give us a, oh, you did, okay, come on up. Sorry, I didn't see your hand till I was.
So, commissioners, my name's Dave Carlson. I live at 1917 South 3500 West. I'd like to point out that I work out of state, so it's cost me a significant amount of money to be here at this hearing today. The fact that this even up for a, for a vote, really, it disturbs me. It's dealing with the county thus far is, it's been kind of a comedy of errors and, and insult. We were first notified of this project in the fall of 2014 with a flyer on our door. That was the first notification that we got. We went to the meeting, where gave some preliminary plans, met with Blaine Franson, he's in here. Blaine laid out, you know, some things that were going to happen and that they would be out to talk to us. We were right in the process of finishing our lot. We purchased this lot and set it up on my wife's horses. We've invested about $100,000 just in the property, excuse me, leveling the property, planting pasture, you know, et cetera. We were getting ready to reinstall the fence on the north side of the property. We decided we would wait and try to work with the county. We asked for that information in, in October and we were told we had to wait for an offer. So, we called, we said we'd get it in November. That didn't happen. We called again, we referred to Gail Paget. I called Gail, she said maybe December. Called in December, nothing in December. Called in January, nothing yet. Finally, in February, we got Gail to come meet with us and she bought a contract that was cut and paste hack job of a UDOT contract. There's very little of anything that said Weaver County in it all. A lot of it said UDOT and a lot of it was incorrect. Even the property lines and some of the descriptions were incorrect. So, Gail left that meeting with us with 15 questions that, you know, that we needed answered and promised to get us back a, an updated contract. That's never happened. One of the things that we asked for in there was for the county to finally come out and show us where we can install the fence. That didn't happen either. Two months later, Blaine, Blaine Franson and Horox Engineers on about April showed up and pointed some lines on the property and said, this is kind of where it's at. We can't tell you for sure without a real survey. We asked for real survey and we were told that was out of the question because it would introduce too many more variables into the process. Now, this is my property. Now, I'd like to know what's being taken and where those lines actually are. The, the excuse is too many variables be introduced by pointing the exact lines. That doesn't really, doesn't sit well with us. So, after that, we, we reached out to the ombudsman's office because we weren't sure what was going on. We didn't really have any information. Through the ombudsman's office, it took us another two months to get a meeting, which finally happened the first of June, where we sat down with the county. We left that meeting with three action items, two for the county and one for us. Ours was to go research and find an appraiser and the county was to come out and actually show us where the property lines were on that property and get us an updated offer to, to correct the inconsistencies in the first one. None of those ever happened. We were able to get the appraiser out there within a week and get that ball rolling, but we didn't get any response from the county. Finally, 90 days later, we gave up and went ahead and reinstalled the rest of our fence on the same line where the one we took out was. Within an hour of us starting construction, Blaine Franson showed up. Now, they couldn't respond to us for 90 days, do what they agreed to, but within an hour of the contractor setting post, Blaine was there on site telling us that we were putting the fence in the wrong spot, but he still couldn't tell me exactly where it should be. Now, during that time, we had to board our horses. That cost us about $4,000 to not have our horses there on our property over the last 10 months that we paid out of our own pocket. After the, the threats that Blaine made when he showed up, threatening to red-tag the projects on my property, and that's a pretty common thing with the county. That's happened to me before. The county come out demanding we fill in a hole on the side of the road on the property. I said I didn't have time to do it, you know, for a few months because it required a lot of fill. I got threatened that we will red-tag anything on your property, right? So, I guess this is standard operating procedure here. It's very disappointing, but after the threats that Blaine made when they were there on site, Jim Wright from the ombudsman's office suggested that we have another meeting. So, that happened a few days later, in early September. We, we sat down in the meeting, talking with, with Jared and Blaine. The first thing that Jared told me is, I don't believe that you have any intention of working with this. And I'm not sure where that's coming from because we spent the money to board the horses. We waited 10 months to try to cooperate on where to put the fence. I've still got 2,000 pounds of rock sitting at my house that we never finished our landscaping projects with to wait on this. And we spent another $2,000 in irrigation pumping equipment, so we didn't have to finish the covert to the north side of our property that the county would then have to rip out at their cost and, and move. We've been trying to cooperate. I'm not sure what more I can do to cooperate. Even today, I still don't have a contract from the county. I know for a fact that they've got the appraisal back nearly a month ago. I still don't have anything else in writing. So, the fact that we're here discussing, moving forward with eminent domain proceedings, authorizing that, giving them another tool to try to use against us when they haven't even fulfilled what they need to, it's, it's very disturbing to us. It, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. We're willing to negotiate, we're willing to do these things, but to give them another tool when they haven't even responded or provide us with an offer, it's, it's scary. I'm not sure what rights I have left as a property owner. This is a compulsory action, it's not voluntary, right? We didn't say, come build a road here, we want this done. We got told this was going to happen and we've been trying our best to cooperate. And to this point, now that we're here, this hearing, we can hire outside counsel with county funds, but not hire enough assistants to help Jared and Blaine who are obviously overworked. We can't even get these, these steps of the process done. I'm not even sure what to say. I'm out of time, so thank you.
Thank you. Jared, would you like to comment on?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this is the right setting to be go.
I do, because.
Do you?
I'd like to get some answers, because we have citizens come up over, no answers.
What we can do then, if you would like to go into that kind of detail, I can have Blaine go on the UDOT log. We have to go through a process where all the communications we have with residents, we have to document. I don't have that with me at this time of every person, but we can track that down. We can get all that information together. In fact, I could have Blaine probably start working on that to get that together. He could, I'm guessing he could have most of the information here in about 15 or 20 minutes. Then, we can come back down and say everything that we have done. Now, obviously, Dave's side of the story is one side. I'm not saying that everything he said is incorrect at all. I don't know what is correct and what isn't, but we could get all that information for you and then come down and read through each time we had a meeting, each time we met with Mr. Carlson, what was said and what wasn't. Again, he might not agree with what was said. I don't know if I agree fully with what he said, but that's two sides of the story. So, I, what direction would you like to go?
Well, Commissioner, if you don't mind, Cortland, let me ask you a question. I, I think that might actually be a good idea. I'll be honest, there were a heck of a lot of things that were said in our last meeting that, that were, as far as I could tell, there were just completely, they were once, they were one side of the story. And, and maybe, maybe that's a good idea to have that log in hand. So, Court, my question to you is, Cortland, can we, can we hold this particular resolution open while he gets that? We'll move on to the next one. I, we've got some folks here from the other, from the other group, from the other project that I'm sure will want to speak. We can take that comment and then come back and take action on both, both items. That wouldn't cause us any trouble, would it?
No, if you would like to, to make a motion to, to a different item and hold this until you can get further information later in the meeting, that should be fine.
Do we, do we need to do that or can we just leave it open?
Can we work our way through those citizens that want to address this so we have an idea of all of the concerns? We can gather all of the information at the same time to come back and maybe have an open dialogue?
That's true. There was one other individual who raised, I think you raised your hand on the 3500. So, we'll have her come up and we'll just roll right into the next item. Is that okay?
Sure, yeah. Aren't we going to need that information for the next item too?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. So, we'll get the logs on, can we get the logs on both of these projects?
Yeah, we can work on printing them off. I got to see how quick it'll, we can print them off. I think we can print them off fairly quickly. We have to, we really, we're required to do that through the process.
Okay, get him, get him going and we'll, we'll hear from these other folks.
So, should we wait before we hear from those other folks and move on and do the other things in the budget and come back? Because, because then they're going to, and then we're going to have to redo it all over again. Why not have the information here when we do it and deal with them one at a time and, and get their information?
Could we get all the comments on 3500 so I can get everything?
Does that sound okay? I mean?
I mean, I think we need to know what we're looking for before we, I mean, we could run reams of paper on this project. So, I, I'm thinking we need to go through the concerns that are being expressed and, and the communication gaps and figure out what specific issues are and then we run. And then, you know what to circle and what to come up and how we can work our way through what the concerns are. Again, the, the problem is, is we've had this open type of dialogue on one side and then we take those concerns off, we talk about them in our office and we hear one side and we never have both sides coming together, at least in front of us, to clear up this miscommunication. And so, it, I think it would be beneficial if we could hear all the specific concerns. We can circle them and come back and really address. I mean, from what I understand, we, we say, well, there's no communication, but then we talk to staff and there's been 15 phone calls, meetings set up. So, we need to figure this out.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get it for you.
We'll hear from this other comment. Please come up and state your name for the record.
Hello. My name is Jessica Peterson and I live, obviously, 3500 West, 1480 South. And my husband and I have been working with your staff since we as well got the notice on the door that you're going to be expanding the road. I do have to say I agree with a lot of the things that Mr. Carlson said. Our property does not fit into your round hole. I think you could clarify it as a square peg that Jared's trying to jam into a round hole, which it does not. There is an artesian well on the property that with your new lines falls maybe two feet outside of that. So, the only thing I have at this point is, what I received 10 days ago is the first draft appraisal. And that first draft appraisal was double what Gail Paget's estimate was. So, I think I'm here today because I wouldn't sign Gail's estimate, but it's obvious when you're looking at it. She wouldn't even come present it because it was ridiculous. So, now, what I have here today is I have a draft appraisal. Your staff just decided about October that they probably should start running some tests on the well so that they could, as they say, have a baseline. So, that because it is so close to your construction, if that artesian well should collapse, there is some recourse on our end. I do not have any kind of resolution regarding that well. Those tests were just done last month. So, it's been a year, this process. And it's taken that long for the staff to get the appropriate professionals out and to start those tests. If we would have received a fair, just compensation offer along with the resolution 10 months ago, I wouldn't have needed to be here. I wouldn't have needed to take off work to be here, nor would I have needed to have done that, the four times your staff has been to our house unprepared and irresponsible. So, we can look at the records and see the communication back on, back and forth. I've been waiting on Weaver County's timeline. You're knocking on my door wanting to buy my property. I've been waiting for you to present me with just compensation to do so. I'm still waiting. Jared makes a comment just two weeks ago that this is taking too long. I have a construction schedule. I need to move forward. Well, do you know what? I'm waiting on his schedule. I'm waiting on his timeline. I've been waiting for months for your staff to do what they needed to, to provide me with a resolution to the well and just compensation. I don't have either. But yet, you want to take a resolution to have the option to start eminent domain. I think you're skipping a step. So, I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else on 3500 West that's in the resolution? Are you on the resolution?
We have concerns.
Yeah, I have concerns on it.
We're. We can do that on?
Do it.
We.
Do it.
Well, we're trying to follow a process here, but I, you know, we want to hear from people. We need to follow a process to, to make it. Come on up. Let's.
He's a citizen.
He's a citizen, but we clearly, we clearly.
Let the, please let the chair run the meeting. We, we understand.
We clearly stated at the beginning of the meeting, we'll have an opportunity, there's other opportunities for public comment, but we're, we're trying to follow a process that allows the people who are, who are directly affected by this resolution today to speak. And, and I'm, I'm not totally comfortable with going outside of that because I think it could take us in a completely different direction here. But commissioners, if you, if you want to have, if you want to allow anyone to speak here during this portion of the meeting, I'm, I'm willing to go there if, if that's where you want to go. Tell me what you want to do. We don't need a motion. I just need you to tell me how you want to do this.
So, my question is, is, do you have property on 3500 West?
I do.
Did you already sign?
No.
So, you're on our list then?
We met with him last week. That's the first I've talked to anyone on the whole process.
So, you prob, would you state your name really quickly?
Chad Tolman.
Chad Tolman. Jared, is he on our list?
Blaine mentioned to me this morning he'd be coming in. We, we are not requiring to take any of his property at this time.
Okay, so that, so, all right. I, I think, I think I feel a little bit better about that, knowing that, that, I mean, even though we're not taking property, I, I think that with being on that corridor, I, I think that that's a differentiator here. So, I'm willing to, commissioners, you okay with this?
Yes.
Going outside of this, okay. Okay. I'm sorry about the confusion. We're just trying to keep this straight, so.
So, my biggest concern-
Go ahead, sorry, state your name again, for the record. I missed it.
Chad Tolman.
Thank you.
My biggest concern is with the, with the stormwater drains. They're gonna be piping them through, you know, concrete pipes and dumping them into an overflow ditch just to the north of my house. And that overflow ditch used to run at an angle through my neighbor's property, and he has changed the layout of that, that ditch, which puts a ninety-degree bend in it in the back of my property. When we get, you know, good heavy rains, it ends up flooding my back anyway. And with piping this through the concrete coverts, it's gonna just put that much more water in. It's not gonna allow anything to soak into the ground before it hits my property. So, the back of my property sits lower than all the properties around me. When I talked to Blaine last week, he said if, if he had noticed that before the project started, that he would've possibly looked into doing a flood retention pond, I think is what he called it. And I just wanna know, you know, what I can do about, you know, making it so I can do something with my property and use it.
Okay. Before you go away, Jared, I know on Twelfth Street we have somebody specifically working on drainage. Do we have a similar situation on thirty-five-hundred?
We have, we have to deal with the drainage wherever it is on the road. So, this is the first time I knew that Mr. Tolman had some issues with it. What we will plan on doing is having Blaine contact him. The project hasn't started yet.
Right.
So, I really want, we, we gotta try and address everything that we can when the issues come up. So, we're gonna, we'll call him and see what issues he's talking about and address them.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Alright, we're gonna roll into Twelfth Street here, the next item on the agenda, which is the same, item number six, with the same language, the request to approval, for approval of a resolution of the county commissioners approving proceedings as necessary for the Twelfth Street upgrades. And so, we'll roll right, now, is this a, I'm trying to think if we need to wait for Blaine to get back here for the, to hear this comment, or is this a different engineer we're working with here? Okay, so, we'll, we'll roll right into the comments. So, if you are on the Twelfth Street project and you would like to make a public comment today, please come up to the microphone, state your name for the record, and offer your comment.
I'm Curtis Nye, eighty-one oh seven West, nine hundred South. I have a couple of concerns today. In, when I met with the county the first time, they came to my property and outlined what was going on. And we had discussion about the drain ditch in front of my property. And I told them that that drain ditch was, it was culverted by myself twenty-something years ago, and that I had an installed plastic and metal and some concrete pipe into that ditch. They told me it wouldn't make any difference, because the county wasn't going to do anything with the ditch in this improvement project. Now that I received the registered letter from the county, they say that they are going to culvert the ditch. I am a wastewater user of, of the ditch. It's how I irrigate my property. And if they culvert the whole ditch, how is that going to change my ability to access wastewater? So, I think the county is very much, their plan is fluid at this point. We keep getting different, different answers to our questions about what the county is going to and what the county is not going to do. And so, I think this, you know, condemnation process is preliminary to what should be happening. I think the county needs to come up with a concrete plan. This is exactly what is going to happen in this improvement project. I would like the county to not go on with the condemnation procedure until that is accomplished. Also, oh, about a month and a half ago, I was contacted by the state of Utah that said he was an appraisal for the property in conjunction with this improvement project. And he wanted to come out and do a formal appraisal on my property. Well, I received a bid from, from Weber County that said they would pay such and such amount of money for my property, and I thought that was based on an appraisal. Apparently, it wasn't, because the state subsequently come out and did another appraisal. Wasn't through any of my actions. I didn't ask the Ombudsman's Office to do this. But I haven't heard any further report from the state as to, you know, how much they appraised the property for him. So, I would like to see what the, you know, what that is and why the state was involved. So, I would like those two items addressed.
No, I'm just gonna be asking those two questions about the appraiser. I mean, I think that's a common practice that we've had, having more than one appraiser.
I'd like to address a little bit as far as the project and its design. We've had initial concept plans, and those have grown and progressed over time. And Mr. Nye lives pretty far west, and that is our segment four, I believe. And so, that portion of the project, although we do know what will be contained within those lines, it has been defined and has progressed through the project. And albeit, one of those things has been the drainage, as we looked at the drainage overall for the project and specific for each property owner. So, there has been some progression with the drainage and the way it works, and we've had to work closely with individual property owners. We've added a drainage expert that's, and Mr. Paul Hurst, and he's done an excellent job working closely with property owners. So, we'll make sure that he's back in touch with Mr. Nye to make sure that his questions are answered. I do know that our team has followed up with property owners that are impacted by this, and I believe just a few days ago, that was, that process was done with Curtis, and, and he expressed that he didn't have any further questions. But obviously, today there are new questions, so we can circle back again with him as well. So, and Rochelle can, or Jared can talk to the appraisal issues that he's having.
So, you might've been out of the room, Jared, but the question was asked. I received an offer. I thought it was based on a county appraisal. Next thing I know, I get someone from the state coming to appraise my property. Is that some paraphrased, Curtis?
Let me, Robert can step in, but I think, I'll just try and be as basic as I can. There was a, there's a set limit with these funds. It's, it's ten thousand dollars. So, if there's, the right-of-way acquisition agents are certified to perform what's called an ACE, which is a compensation and estimate. And that's for property and compensation of whatever else is on that property. If it comes in under ten thousand dollars, if it hits above that ten thousand dollar mark, then a first appraisal, one appraisal, first appraisal is required. That first appraisal is a rider, is a agent that's on the U dot appraisal list. And actually, a right-of-way acquisition typically just picks the agent they've worked with a lot and are familiar with, and that person comes out to perform that first appraisal. So, there's, we're talking now about two different scenarios up to this point. Either you've got an ACE on your property, cuz it's under ten thousand dollars, or if it's over ten thousand, then you've got a first appraisal. Now, some of these residents, like Mrs. Peterson mentioned, because it was under that ten thousand dollar mark, that original ACE, then there wasn't a need to get an appraisal until this resolution came on. Once the resolution comes on, we need an appraisal on every property. So, whatever had ACES previously now has to go out and at least get an appraisal done on that. Now, if you're in that boat and you've got a first appraisal now, you still have the ability, so does everybody else, once you have your first appraisal, to go to the Ombudsman's Office. Then you, as a resident, chooses a person off the list to appraise your property. And then they do a second appraisal, independent of the first. They don't even see the first appraisal. So, I, that's pretty basic. I don't know if I missed up on anything.
No, that's exactly right. It is, it actually isn't required that the county, it's, it's not required that the county get that appraisal. If there's an ACE estimate, they can rely on that. But I think the county, in an effort to be fair to the property owners, has gone ahead, even though there's an ACE estimate, and got an appraisal. It's an appraisal that county paid for. There's some confusion about the state being involved, but it's a, it's a, it's an appraisal that county hired to do an appraisal, a formal appraisal, instead of relying on just an ACE estimate. And generally, those appraisals come in higher, and so, it's, I think it's a, something that's, that's fairer to the property owners.
Any, any questions on that? Other than I see Mrs. Peterson has her hand up again, and we'll let her come up, since we're still open in that particular item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would just like to know why the ACE estimates are two times, three times, four times less than what the appraisal comes back at. Everybody I know that has had an appraisal done has blown away that ACE estimate. Gail Pageant refused to come and present the estimate to us for obvious reasons. Thank you.
Jared, can you address that? Is that a common thing?
I don't wanna say it's a common thing. Have I seen those discrepancies? Yes. And I've seen the discrepancies without an ACE, when it's just a first appraisal and a second appraisal. They're both professionals. They both know exactly what they're doing, and they should know what they're doing. And there is discrepancies that can be seen that high. I don't know about four times as much. I don't think I've seen anything to that degree. But, but I have seen at least twice as much between ACE and first appraisal, and between first appraisal and second appraisal.
So, do you have confidence in the ACE appraisals? Or the ACE estimate? I mean, how do you, how do we, I mean, I think that's what they're saying, is what-
I don't know how, well, I'm not an appraiser, so I don't understand the process. To say I have confidence in any appraisal would be hard to say. Now, if there is that, what we do, is if there is that big of a discrepancy, we check and see if there was something that was not included in that original ACE or original first appraisal. A lot of times, things were not included that should've been. That doesn't mean it goes up on everyone. We have seen a couple where a second appraisal is actually lower than the first, so that does happen. But when there is a discrepancy of any kind, we really wanna look into it and make sure that it's done correctly. In fact, U dot does have a process where they have an appraisal reviewer. So, on our first appraisals, if there's something that looks out, we actually send it to a reviewer to have that reviewed.
So, so, the ACE appraisal, is that us? Is that our appraisals? Is that our people?
Yeah, the right-of-way acquisition agent is certified to do an ACE. Sorry, when you say "our people," it's not the county. It's a hired, no, it's a hired right-of-way acquisition agent.
Just like another appraiser.
I understand the frustration, but I don't know why you're pointing the fingers at us. They're not our appraisers. We don't send people out and say, "Appraises for low, so we can get the very lowest project." It's the process that we're required to go through by law. We don't send people out and say, "Get a low appraisal." And in fact, I know Rochelle says, "Get the second one." I mean, I, I understand your frustration, but it's the process we're required to go through. They're not our people. It's, it's what we're required to do. So, I understand the frustration, but I'm not sure why you blame us for low appraisals.
Because you have hired them. That's why.
But I think what you're missing is, is we don't pick one person every single time. It's part of the process. We, if we picked, if we picked another one and it was low again, would you blame that one? If we picked a third appraiser to come in, and he picked him, would you blame that on us again? I mean, this is the process we go through. I don't, I don't understand why somehow you generate this feeling that we are trying to undercut your appraisals. We're not.
We actually hired the U dot service.
So, I, I wanna, I'm frustrated with the appraisals, right? It's frustrating, not just in this case, but I've had the occasion to have appraisals on lots of different things over the years. And the fact of the matter is, I'm convinced that it's more of a art than a science in a lot of ways. It's, it's, you get a mixed bag with appraisals. Now, that being said, back to what Commissioner Eber said, to me, it's extremely frustrating, but it, but it's really the process that we've been dealt. You know, to deal with these types of things, we, we depend on these appraisals. I don't know of any other way, and I don't think the state has come up with any other way, to determine a value, other than to the process that an appraiser goes through as he works through this pro, he or she works through this process. And so, you know, that's why there is some checks hopefully built in place to say, "Hey, if, if you're not happy with the first one, you can get a second one," that type of thing. I'm hoping that we, that with all of the frustration about some of the ACES or whatever, that we can move forward now and, and answer, "Where are we now?" So, so my question to you, Jared, is, where are we now? Is everyone that's in this room today entitled to a second appraisal?
Yes, they're entitled to a second appraisal, and that is paid for by the county, and they choose their appraiser, appraiser through the Ombudsman's Office.
Okay, so, it, I mean, I, all the frustration aside of the first appraisals, they, they don't really matter, right? I mean, if, if the second appraiser, second appraisal is requested, they're gonna get one, right?
They will get one. The time where the first appraisal will matter is if they get the second one, and there's a big enough discrepancy, and sometimes the discrepancy is one hundred percent valid. So, that's what we go through with the Ombudsman and mediation and sit down and say, "Okay, what, what's right, what's not, what looks good," and we come to a resolution on that. But yes, as far as getting an appraisal, they, they can get that second appraisal. Anybody can.
When the Ombudsman comes into a situation like that, do they help work through extenuating circumstances? I know Mrs. Peterson talked about a well, but say there's something else that you think the appraiser has not taken into account. Are you able to express that at that particular time and expect that that'll be taken into account in the second appraisal?
Definitely. And the Ombudsman has their attorney there. He really helps represent the resident, although he's kind of, he, he just kinda helps with the negotiation. But if there are any questions or anything comes up, he's a very good resource to lean on and say, "What, what do we need to do?" And what it typically is, is not the resident saying, "The county won't let me." It's usually the county and the resident saying, "What do we need to do to get this resolved? And is there any way we can get it done?" So.
So, so my question is, the first appraisal came, and apparently, they're all over the board, what I'm hearing, did anybody accept the first appraisal?
Well, we only, well, I don't wanna say only. I can't remember the number that are here total, about thirty-five. Resident, there's a hundred and thirty-two residents on Twelfth Street. I believe it's close to eighty-seven residents on thirty-five-hundred. So, of the two ten to two thirty or forty residents we're dealing with, we're down to the thirty-five. That doesn't mean, some have gotten a second appraisal, and we've negotiated and signed that off. But I would, I would probably say at least fifty percent that got their first appraisal or ACE, accepted it, and we're, we're good to move on.
So, if that's the, one of our rubs there on these appraisals, so state law tells us that we have to go out and get the appraisals, why couldn't the first appraisal be someone that they picked to go out and do it instead of us? Would there be any reason we couldn't?
That is the process, is that when we initially go out and get that first appraisal, it is, and we follow U dot process, what U dot typically does, and their offer list. We haven't, before these projects, we didn't know these appraisers. We'd never used them before, so we didn't know how they were gonna appraise or how they weren't. We just, there was a list of them, and they had to be certified and qualified through U dot to do the work.
So, so the first appraisal that we're talking about, did they select that person, or did we?
We, you could say we did. We discussed.
Could we, could we have let them select that first appraiser, or not?
No, that's not the process.
So that's, so, 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 so that's off the table. We couldn't have went and said, "Here's a list of appraisers, property owner. Here's the five you can choose from. You can pick one of these and go get the appraisal then, and we'll get the appraisal done with one of these." So, so the process is they cannot do that. But they can on the second one.
Correct.
So why would we not want to do it on the first one?
It's a process.
Curiosity.
And my guess is, is because of the majority that accept the first appraisal. And maybe the majority of the, of those residents say, "I don't want to be involved. Just get a good appraisal, and if it looks good, then I'm, I'm done."
Okay.
Jared, who sets the process?
Well, we'll follow UDOT process.
So we don't, we, we can't do what Commissioner Bell says. We have to follow the process that's been set by UDOT.
Well, and I would, I would probably include state law a little bit also, so I'm not 100% sure if this, in the future, if the funds, where we receive these funds from, if we're able to change that policy or not, I'm not 100% sure. But currently, we, we follow the UDOT process, so.
Okay. Mr. Carlson's got something he wants to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Eber, you, you mentioned the frustration. I just want to make a point of clarification. The, the aces, quote, appraisals that, that they're talking about, those are put together by Gail Pageant, at least in our case, on Thirty-Five Hundred West. She is a real estate acquisition agent. She's not an appraiser that puts together a spreadsheet. And I asked her straight up when she came to the house the first time. I said, "You're compensated on getting this, the property the lowest price possible," and she said, "Yes." So she is a real estate acquisition agent that's making those first, quote, ace appraisals that come out, that are being put in front of people. It's not a, it's not an official appraiser or anything else, by somebody who is financially incentivized to get the property at the lowest cost.
Okay, I, we gotta follow up on the financial incentive part, Jared, just to make sure that, I mean, I hope that's not the case.
No, just, yeah, give me the evidence, please. No, 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 and no. Now, that doesn't mean that Dave heard, he might have heard that from her. Okay? I don't know. He might have heard that understanding from her. But she, by the UDOT process, she is certified to perform an ace. That's what we know. Now, when she does an ace, along with all the other two hundred and thirty residents that we have, there's absolutely, it's, it's kind of a little bit absurd. There's absolutely no reason for us to follow up on what's low and what's not. I wouldn't even know. She could bring in an ace, and I wouldn't know if it's low or not. That's just her estimate, and it's her professional opinion, and she's certified to do that, so.
All right, let's get back to Twelfth Street. We had, we kind of got in there and then kind of went back a little bit, but let's, let's have any others from the Twelfth Street corridor come up.
I'm Bill Davis. I live on Twelfth Street. My question is funding. Why are we even here until you guys get the funding? Because when I come to the last meeting and you condemned the first phase, this is now four phases, before it was three. I'm wondering, why do I want to negotiate with you now when you may not get your funding for three years? You guys are worried about putting this out for bid. I don't want to sell my ground now, and you don't do nothing with it for three years. In three years, it'll be more valuable. I'm not gonna sell it to you until you get your funding. Number two is, according to your team, this is all for safety, correct? The road is being widened for the safety, but yet, the bridge is not being addressed. And because you're widening the road, a lot of the houses are too close, and they're actually gonna have to lower the speed limit to forty-five miles an hour. Okay, my next question is, as a team, I'm sure you guys have sat down and discussed this. I want to know how you're gonna maintain that speed limit of forty-five, because we do not have any enforcement now. We haven't had any enforcement in the sixty years that I've been born and lived on that road, and I don't see that into the future. Now, if this is a safety issue, you guys need to go on record on how you're gonna maintain that, because I'm a resident there, and I'm sure there's a lot of them, that if it's not maintained, I'm gonna call and call and call, because you guys are agreeing that is a safety issue, okay? Number, one of my third ones is, I was on the planning commission for a while. We have a planning book here. If you would have read through here, it really don't address anything about widening that road. It addressed alternative road. We still, we come to these meetings and everything. It's never been discussed. There's nothing on the blueprint of alternative road. If you live below Seventy-Five Hundred, there's technically no way to get out of that community, because the only roads that's out there, or dirt roads, it's almost impassable at certain times. If you drive by there, the, they're not maintained. And there's a lot, been a lot of planning mistakes done by the county. And every time I addressed him, it was, oh, that was done before I was here. Now, we can take the example of that, and I don't want to pick on anybody, but I know the Larkins kid, his house was built. The county made a lot of mistakes there. They should have took the road right away off. You're gonna build a house, you know that there, or you're gonna build a road, you know there's survey problems out there. None of the survey problems is being addressed. You build this road, they straighten out the survey. Maybe you're gonna have to move your road. It's gonna be pretty difficult to move the roads there. So, and all these mistakes, is every, anybody ever reprimanded? Any mistakes that's done by the county? Is there ever anything done, or is it just, "Oh, we made a mistake. Sorry." And then, another concern I got is, you're building a road there. If I subdivide my ground, you have a planning book here that tells me that you're gonna dictate to me certain things that's gotta be provided in that subdivision. One of them is curb and gutter. We're building a four-lane highway there, that you guys claim isn't gonna be a four-way highway, but I can't see it being that, because you're gonna have to maintain the speed limit of forty-five miles an hour from here forever, because them houses is too close, the speed limit can never be increased. And I guess I'm losing my chain of thought there. How come we're not putting curb and gutter and sidewalk on this road? The county don't even live within the rules that they're dictating to the private sector. You got a question there. If I put a subdivision in, you're gonna tell me I gotta have, I gotta pipe the ditches, I gotta do this, I gotta do that, I gotta put curb and gutter in. You're not doing any of this with the road that you're building. So to me, it's the county's above the law. So you can address that.
John, we have, do you have any curb, gutter, and sidewalk west of the River Bridge out there on Twelfth Street, anywhere?
You got it on Sixty-Nine Hundred. There's a subdivision there.
There may be some individual subdivisions out there. As a general rule, the county, the county ordinance does say the curb, gutter, and sidewalk is required. However, deferral agreements are also in that ordinance, and that is typically what the developers ask for, depending on where they're located, distance from schools, other, other information like that. So some subdivisions are required to install, some are not, and it really just depends on the circumstances.
All right.
You want to talk about funding?
Sure.
Would you like to talk about funding? You know more about it than I do.
I don't know if Douglas is still close by, wants to address the funding issue, but. Would you just give him a text and just see if he's available to come and address the funding issue, okay? All right, let's go ahead and keep on moving with the individuals who'd like to comment from Twelfth Street. We'll try and address that funding issue as we get some information.
My name's Randy Giudano. I live out on the west Twelfth Corridor, Seventy-Eight Fifty-Two West. My concern with that is, the road goes basically nowhere. Goes out to GSL and the R First Base and, and Western Zirconium. The ADT on that road is less than fifteen hundred cars a day. I want to know where the funding's coming from to fund such. Why is it legal as a taxpayer to spend thirty million dollars out there on that west corridor when the ADT don't warrant? I agree, the road needs to be upgraded for safety, but it does not warrant spending that kind of money out there. Isn't the county got standards on ADT, on how much ADT requires X amount of dollars? Four lanes, three lanes, whatever? I'm asking you commissioners point blank.
Well, it flies in direct opposition to what Mr. Davis just said about having planning into the future, and that's what we're doing. We're trying to step up as a commission and actually have some planning for long-term growth or transportation issues.
And I'm not, I'm not.
That's the purpose of this. We sat in our last meeting, got lectured on why we're making the road so wide. Well, we're having advanced, long-term planning. That's what we're attempting to do. There's multiple reasons that we're looking at this project. Safety is a concern. Long-term growth is a concern. And so, you know, we get arguments on both sides, and so I can, I'm not, and don't mistake me. I have a monstrous cold, so usually I seem a little more chipper, but I'm not very chipper today. So I'm not, I'm not, this is my sick tone, that's all it is. But we are looking at this project as a long-term growth project. We've talked about these east-west corridors we have. Well, I don't want to take farmland and people's homes to create these corridors. We're kind of stuck with what we have to an extent. So we've done some corridor preservation. We've looked at this project as a long-term project. We may not have the amount of traffic today, but if we wait ten years to get your numbers, then this project's gonna be five times the cost and five times the hurt on individuals that live along this corridor. And so I, I can understand, and, and, and when Mr. Davis asked about if we hold people accountable, well, trust me, I get held accountable, and I get chewed on all the time, and so, yes, we do. But I, I don't know if that answers your question, but there's an attempt here of having long-term.
I'm concerned about that. You're buying the property today for ten or fifteen years down the road. My property would be worth more fifteen years from today. So according to state law, it's illegal to buy property for a fair.
You said is responsible to the taxpayers to build this without the, without the traffic. So I would say to you, in response to that statement, it's very responsible for us today to purchase a property.
Right. The taxpayers are saving off, but it's against the law to buy property.
But again, you've made the argument on both sides. You've made the argument on both sides, and so you, I'm in the middle trying to figure out the best way to do it, along with these commissioners. And you've made the argument that it's not fair to you, but we shouldn't build it because we don't have the traffic. Well, when we wait for the traffic, it's not responsible for the taxpayers that we waited so long. And then we fall into Mr. Davis's argument that where's the long-term planning? Do you understand my quandary I have here?
I kind of do, but I, I do.
And I love you, and I'm, I'm sorry. I'm a little under the weather. I love you like a brother. That's what I do.
What about the speed limit? I'd like to hear my question on the speed limit, how we're gonna address maintenance.
Okay, okay.
I'll talk about that in a minute.
Hi. I'm Anna Giudano, and I live with him on Twelfth Street. Anyway.
It's the best one of the day.
Most time. Anyway. We are in negotiations with Ombudsman, and we've had the county out several times, but we probably have had him out more than anybody else. Because we haven't ever got all of the information at the same time. And I get that it's a long plan. It takes a long time to get things organized. I really feel like if you do this in the future, you really need to have your ducks in a row before you send people out to talk. I think you've already learned that lesson, truly.
We've learned a lot of lessons.
Right, with the design and stuff. And I realize it's a big project. It takes a long time. But we finally are getting a more definitive, detailed design in front of our home. It doesn't just affect our home. It affects our, our, our living, kind of. All of our, you know, the way, our way of life and the way we do business in our house. So we met with, Rochelle came out and Jared, and we appreciate him coming out on Friday. And Joseph's not here, and, and he, and I can't speak with him because he's smarter than I am. But he's gonna be gone out of town for about six weeks, maybe two months. So we are working with Ombudsman. We are concerned about the drainage. We are concerned about the speed limits and, and how close this is gonna put. You know, you're saying it's not a four-lane road, but, you know, if you do the math, it's gonna end up a four-lane road eventually. So we're, we want, we're also concerned about the diminished value to the rest of our properties, because we're so close to a, a wider thoroughfare. So when they came out and talked to us, though, my biggest concern, really, I mean, I want to be justly compensated. Don't get me wrong. First, we were gonna have, they were gonna pay for the fences, then they weren't gonna pay for the fences. No, you're not gonna have to move the fences. Yes, you're gonna have to move the fences. We've gone all around and all around, and I think we're finally gonna get some firm answers soon. Jared actually was gonna have someone come out and put some marks to see exactly where everything is in front of our properties. And then we are requesting a second appraisal through Ombudsman. But my biggest, you know, all that is said is, all of us out here, and we, I think a lot of the people's major concern is the safety and the speed limit and the lack of patrolling. And I don't buy that there's nowhere to pull stuff, people over. It's stupid, that saying, "We know people are, you know, breaking the law because you did a test." Not you. But that, you know, they had things ran, and the average speed limit's sixty-two. Well, so that's telling me, your sheriff's saying, "Well, we know the people out there are breaking the law, but we're just gonna let them break the law till we fix the road, so we have a safe place to pull them over." That doesn't make sense to me. You're losing a lot of revenue out there, guys. So I guess I want Jared to explain to us about the speed limit, and he said he would today, for everybody, so that they know. Because I, to me, that is one of my greatest concerns. So that's where we stand on that. I really still agree with what my husband says, and I, I understand the quandary, you know, going round in a circle. But I really feel like most of the people out here, had this been approached in a more organized, more definitive manner, I think you wouldn't have had so much pushback and all this, I can't say what I want to, but all this trouble.
Consternation.
Yeah, there you go, confusion. So that's just my things, and I would like Jared to explain to everybody. I don't know if everybody's heard that they are thinking of lowering the speed limit.
So I'll, I'll address that, Anna, just a little bit, and, and may, maybe with a question as well. But I, as, as you mentioned with the speed limit, I think that that has been a challenge for a while. I mean, I, I've, I've heard for many, many years, concerns, complaints. I've even voiced them myself, that, that the speed limit's too high on that road. I don't think that that's necessarily a part of this project. Am I, am I wrong with that, Jared? I, I think that that is, more than anything, an op, a, a chance for, for us to try and address some concerns here. Is that, is it, how, how tied is it to the project in itself?
Well, we do.
Changing of the speed limit.
Sorry, we do have to post a speed on it. And we have heard many residents similar to you, similar to Giudanos and everybody else that's mentioned that is, the speed is a concern. As the residents know, the last open house we had, the average speed is sixty-two miles an hour, and the posted speed is fifty. That equals a lot of people speeding, and, and that's, that's workers and residents alike. What we can do, and what we've told the residents we would like to do, is to lower the speed limit by at least five miles per hour. By law, we can lower it by five miles per hour without doing a study and going through the traffic study process. If it's anything ten miles an hour or above where we change the speed, the speed limit, then we'd have to get the monies to do a, to do a traffic study and see what it does and what it doesn't do. I know we initially had Hales Engineering, who's a traffic engineering on our team. We told them, evaluate it and see. In fact, the words out of my mouth was, "See how low you can get it." Because I knew it was a concern. I know a lot of people are going fast. They're, in their report, they stated the speed is, the average speed is so high. Their concern is, is if we lowered it to a forty or to a thirty, that there would be multiple accidents. I guess before everybody got used to driving that speed. But what I have told the residents is, is we want to commit to lowering that from at least fifty to forty-five. And then, it's not up to me, but I definitely, I'm agreeing with them in wanting to see enforcement stepping up in that area. stepping up in that area for sure. And if the reason is that there's, um, not the shoulders, um, the roadway will provide those shoulders. And I, you know, similar to Giadonnos and many, many others, they've told us there's a lot of locations where they can pull people over. But, uh, definitely a concern now. Do I wanna say it's tied to the funds of the project? No, but I think it's an opportunity for us right now to be able to post the best speed limit we can for the, for the safety of the traffic out there.
So can we just lower it by nine?
Nope, we can do it by five. So let me ask you this, what if we do a traffic study and the traffic study comes up and says, no, it needs to be fifty or even fifty-five?
Um, like, my understanding is, and I can double check, but my understanding by law, we can lower it five miles per.
I, I agree, but let's say.
If they tell us not to.
But let's say we wanna lower it ten.
Yeah.
And so we gotta do the traffic study, and we go do a traffic study, and the traffic study comes back and says forty-five's too low, this road should be fifty-five. That is the problem with that traffic study, that is where, yeah, absolutely.
When we went to the open house in Cadesville, I talked to your designer that was hired, and the, the, they, a lot of them houses are too close to the right-of-way now. And he told me that for every foot that you widen that road that brings them, the roadway, the right-of-way into the houses, you have to, it diminishes the speed that you can travel. And your designer himself told me that the design of that road, the speed limit, would have to be dropped to forty-five miles an hour. So that's your team that's telling us that. Now, you're saying, you're saying different things here. Your design team, no, you didn't say.
That's not true, that's not what he's saying.
He'd say we ought to, you don't have an option according to the design team.
That's not true, that's not true. Speed limits are set by the national, by the National Traffic Safety based upon an equation. And that equation is created by traffic speeds, and they'll give you a miles per hour above or below that. Anything above or below that, we create a traffic situation that's dangerous, and we become liable as a county or a city. There's specific requirements for that. We can't arbitrarily set speed limits, it's not allowed. It's not allowed in city government, it's not allowed in county government. You may be talking to a designer, but a designer's not the individual who sets the traffic speeds. One, two, that's not what Jared's saying, Jared's agreeing with you. What Commissioner Bell is saying is we have a concern, if we do a traffic study on that, it's gonna come back at sixty-two miles an hour, which gives us that four or five mile leeway, and it's gonna say our speed limit should be fifty-five, and that's not what we want. We're agreeing with you right now, I'm not sure why you're frustrated with this.
But you're trying to, to make it that sound like that you guys are gonna be the heroes.
Oh, no.
And according to the design team.
Facts and data.
All I want is some enforcement out there, and if the law and the information says that speed limit's forty-five miles an hour, it needs to be forty-five miles an hour.
What if it says it's fifty-five?
We're getting, you're telling me one thing, your design team is telling you another, and your engineer's telling you another.
That's not, that is not, that's not correct.
You're having with this whole street.
The problem is, is you're bringing in third-hand information. I'm giving you firsthand informa, information from the horse's mouth, from Jared and from us. This is firsthand information, anybody can.
How is it a third team? It was your designer.
Because he's not here to tell you, tell us the entire conversation of what he meant, what he was talking about. What type of streets is he talking about? Is he talking about residential streets? Is he talking about commercial streets and commercial zones? Is he talking about highways? Does all that change depending on the type of zone we're in? I don't, we don't know that information, we know a third-hand comment that somebody made.
Acting like you're an expert on it.
All right, we're not gonna argue like this.
I, I am an expert on, um, second-hand information, that is true.
What we're gonna do, we're gonna get back to the process, which is that we're going to have the people come up, make their comments, have the opportunity to get heard, we'll try to address the question, but we've gotta avoid this back and forth from the microphone, it's not doing us any good. Let me just, let me just fa, um, make one final statement on the speed limit. I, I have been concerned about it, I've signed petitions requesting it to be lowered. I, I live on that road, I know how crazy it is, it's, it's too high. Um, what we're saying here is part of this process, I mean, I, I do have to admit my frustration because on one hand, some of you are saying, change the, change the speed limit, we want it lower. What we're saying is, we're gonna lower the speed limit to everything we possibly can.
And that's not enough, I don't know what else we can do for you. We just agreed that forty-five's a great speed, we're happy with that forty-five, we can legally change it to forty-five, we believe. And we still have people coming up and saying, and, and saying we're not doing the right thing. That's what's frustrating to me, and I apologize for parking at you, Mr. Davis, I apologize. But we feel like, so, we feel like we're doing the right thing here, and we're agreeing with you.
So, so we're gonna, we're gonna, um, recommend that the speed limit be lowered within our, within our authority. Um, if, if there comes a time that we need to do a study, we'll do that study. But, but I would just say that we ought to be very careful when we do that study because of what's been pointed out. It could go the opposite direction on us, and so we'd like to be careful on that. All right.
So one more second on this. So do we have to pass an ordinance to change this speed limit? We do to do that, how, how do we make this happen?
I'll let you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I'll check and see if I has to go by ordinance.
So let's get it done, let's get the signs changed, let's get whatever we have to, and get that done, drop it five miles an hour.
And I think it's fair to say as well that, that we will, um, work with the sheriff to, and.
Absolutely.
To the, you know, I mean, obviously, that's not our decision as to whether or not to park a sheriff's truck there. But, but I, I hope that the sheriff will hear the concerns and make adjustments to those concerns, do some work. All right, come on up.
I wanna know, because we are in the, I think we're in the third phase, right? And, and let's be really honest here, we know that's probably not gonna happen until at least two thousand seventeen. You're gonna start at forty-seven hundred and work your way to the bridge, correct? Is that, that's correct, right? The bridge, they're just gonna not do anything with unless, you know, the state gives you funding because bridges are with the states, I get. So, you know, from.
And we're working on that.
Yeah, from, it'd be nice if we could get the bridges fixed, cause that's where most of the problems are.
I agree totally with you.
And if, so my concern is, why are we in such a hurry to, to, you know, wanna do this, go through this eminent domain process and all of that? For the residents that still probably are a year out from, at least a year out from the construction. Because as has been said before, there's people who, you know, it's true, property might go up, I don't know. You know, we all have to look out for our own, you know. So, you know, like I said, we are working with O'Budsmen. We're not opposed to the project, we're not totally in agreement with all of it. But, you know, my question is, why are we in such a hurry to wanna do these proceedings when we know we're still at least a year, year and a half out on this third phase and fourth phase?
Jared, give us an update on the timeline.
Um, update on the timeline, we're working with many utility companies. Um, two of the companies that we have committed to getting the right-of-way ready for them to come in and start construction is Rocky Mountain Power and Questar. And they're both planning, now it might not be right to the date, might be within a month or two, but at the start of the year, they're both planning on and coming and putting in their utilities on the entire stretch. So from forty-seven hundred west all the way out, um, I don't wanna say to Little Mountain, but all the way out to where the main approach is there for, for western Zirconium. So, um, they are planning on starting that construction. Um, Anna, Anna is right, as far as the dollars are concerned, to do the pavement for that roadway stretch from, from the river out to eighty-three hundred, um, the earliest, it looks like the earliest we can get them, hopefully, is, is two thousand seventeen. Now, if we get the dollars this next year, I, between bidding and getting anything ready, I still don't think we'd be able to get the contractor started this year anyway. Um, so, but the, we do have to get that right-of-way, we've committed to Rocky Mountain Power, committed to Questar to get that available. They need to come in, uh, before we start construction anyway. So they're gonna be coming in and doing their work, and, uh, we need to get that right-of-way cleared for them to do that. Now, I have had a couple residents say, well, we'll give them the perpetual easement to do that. And that has happened in the past, but I know they've, with this being this long of a stretch and this many residents, they've come out and said, uh, we're excited that you're getting this ready, and as soon as you guys get that cleared, then we come in and start the construction, so.
So they can, west of the bridge, they can expect to see right-of-way, or excuse me, power, infrastructure work happening in twenty sixteen.
Yes.
Pavement in twenty seventeen.
Yes. Well, and pavement, hopefully, I, you know, that will be the earliest, earliest pavement would happen would be two, twenty seventeen. And then that Questar and Rocky Mountain Power will go all the way out, the, the entire corridor, um, start, starting the start of the year, start of next year.
All right. Did that answer your question? That, does that kinda? Okay. All right, anyone else on Twelfth Street like to comment?
Hi, Eldon Davis, I live at seventy-ninety west, nine hundred south, there on Twelfth Street. Um, hate to go backwards, but the appraisal process has been less than satisfactory in my end as well. Uh, had the fellow came out, and when I got my written appraisal, he, he came out, he didn't bring the information he needed, he didn't bring the plot thing, I had a copy I provided for him. He didn't have his survey, he left his papers back at the office, conveniently or unconveniently. Um, he acted in a great hurry to do this. As I received his appraisal, it says, well, I'm not qualified to do the home appraisal. So he brought an individual from Brigham. And then in the back, it says he's not qualified to do the ditches or those type of things. Apparently, he can appraise the, the ground in front of my house, and it's limited to that. So he, he's, and then he says, under his signature, he says, I did this all by myself. I didn't have any significant help doing this. So he's either perjured himself or something there. Um, it's less than satisfactory when they, fellow you have says, I'm not qualified to do this, I'm not qualified to do that. I'd expect more professionalism from the people that got hired here on this. I too have went to the O'Budsmen and requested a second appraisal, I haven't quite received that yet. Uh, one thing on the speed limit, just briefly, most, several of the people here have tractors, they drive down that road. And it's more dangerous at sixty than it is at forty-five, and you only have about seven seconds if you just see that person to get stopped, and that's if you're a car, if you're a semi, you may as well kiss it goodbye. Um, there are survey problems down there, and you've known that, uh, you've had other things on property lines, uh, Lynn Brown in our area, and ditches, uh, on that. I think before you do eminent domain, it would be helpful if you would settle some of these survey differences. On my place, you have two different sets of survey included in my appraisal package. I can tell you which one I'm gonna go with, but these things are things that should delay your eminent domain until some of the very basics get done, and survey has to be one of those. Thank you.
Anything there that any of you would like to respond to?
So are we addressing the issues with their surveys? What are we doing about the discrepancies in surveys that we've heard from several different individuals?
No, I, I can answer that. So, um, we, we hired a professional survey group to do the survey work. So it's not our internal survey, um, it's their liability to make sure it's done right. So they gather all the documents and all, everything necessary to determine where that existing right-of-way line is for the individual property owner. Um, once we get that determined line, then the county says, in order to get our fifty-foot half-width, we need this much more property. So that's what the county is asking for. Now, what I've seen, what Mr. Davis is referring to that I've seen lately, I haven't seen it done a whole lot, but the appraiser themselves will ask the resident, well, how much do you think you own? And how much do you think you need to ask for? And so the appraiser takes it upon himself, in fact, we called one literally last week, and I'd give you the name and everything, but I can do that later, and said, this was done wrong because of this, this, and this. And the appraiser said, you're right, um, I'll hurry and fix that and send out an updated one to the resident. So what the appraiser is doing is he's creating his appraisal and saying, if the county wants this much square feet, this is what the value is, um, the resident is saying he actually owns this much more, this is what the value is.
And that falls within the process we have to follow?
I, I've asked, um, I've asked that question twice to two separate appraisers, and they have said yes. But what we're, um, it depends on how negotiations obviously would go. But what we're saying is, is we hire a professional surveyor to tell us where that line should and shouldn't be. And they have all the backup documents to defend that. So that's what we go off currently.
Yes, sir.
Which survey marker are they going by? There seems to be a discrepancy down in our area, or are they going from the north or from the south in that area?
I'd, I'd have to.
If you're just going seventy-five hundred, you're probably right, but.
I'd really, I'd have to come out to the property to address each individual, or we can meet, Eldon. We can, we can meet and discuss which one we're going off of, I can let him know for sure, so.
If, if I could add, I'm sorry, Chairman, Chair. We, this is not an uncommon problem. We had another piece of property we were looking at not too long ago where the survey lines, depending on what end they were drawn from, didn't match up. And so it's just not specific to these properties. Um, I don't have resolution for it, to be honest with you, I don't.
We bought this thing, had to redesign an, an entire building that we were building because of a discrepancy. I just, I mean, we oughta do our best to get it right. I, I just don't know that it's realistic to say we're gonna solve all the survey problems because we're building this, this process. It's a, it's a difficult, I, I don't know if it's possible, but.
Well, in, over years it will, because of the GPS, how good and accurate that is, we'll have that. But they were using tape measures back in the day and running transits, and it's just, things are, I, things, surveys are, seems like every time you turn around, a little, I've dealt with surveys, they're not right on, they're.
How many feet are we, general, how, how far off are we? We ten feet, a hundred feet, twenty feet? What are, what are, what is your general feeling from?
Do you want me to answer that real quick? Residents, no, it's, it's been, depending on the resident, um, as you're aware, a lot of properties, the property line currently of a resident goes to the center line of the road or approximately at that location. So all, there, there are some residents that wanna claim all the way to there, so that's the extreme. So it just depends on where fence signs have been, and depends on what property's been occupied. It just, there's a lot of different things. In fact, I think I could almost bring up probably everybody individually, and each of them have something different on their property that they're, you know, that they're looking at and, and trying to determine, so.
Commissioner, when you say how, how far off are we? I mean, we have a licensed surveyor who says that we're dead on, right? And, and yet, when you compare it to an older survey or a different survey or whatever, it may not be exactly the same, so. You see what I mean? It's a pretty, it's almost like in, like two different appraisals, other than there's supposed to be a little more math, I think, in a survey, I'm guessing. All right, Brent, come on up.
My name is Brent Davis, I live at seventy-four oh-six west, nine hundred south. Uh, this survey, when you hired somebody to do this survey, did you tell them that there was problems down there? Was that given to them?
Yes, well, given to them, yeah, we told them there's many problems, you have to do all the research they needed to, to justify their stance, so.
On, on my father's property, you've got a stake that far in saying that's where the property line is now. So you, you wanna take that property without paying us for it. Uh, so that, that's a big concern to me. You're taking property that has been ours all along, even when we bought it, that survey was right. Uh, so I, I don't feel it's right to, you come in and take property that's been ours all the time without paying us for it. Uh, as far as the speed limit, I've been told time and time again, and again today, that there is a formula. Nobody will give that for. Nobody will give that formula to me.
It's called the eighty-five percentile, quartile.
My, my buddy's place will be nine feet, his property line, nine feet in front of his house, and that's not right. You, you said that, that was what?
Eighty-five percentile. They'll do a traffic study, they'll take eighty-five percent of the speed, and they'll make that-
Can you give me the formula?
It's not a formula, it's eighty-five percent.
All the time I've asked, since this started, there's a formula, there's a formula, what it will be.
We're not gonna engage anyone, we're gonna, we're gonna let them-
Okay.
Concerns, then we'll answer them, okay?
My ditch, I was told we will definitely not move it. And now, we're gonna move it, but we're going to change the flow, we're gonna put two more elbows in it. You're going to diminish the flow of my irrigation ditch because you would not do it before you signed up other people. Now, I, I'm told that we have to be compensated fairly. And fairly is I have my full water flow, so I expect something to be done there. I've asked five different employees of yours to talk to my neighbor about moving the ditch, and not one, not one of them's got back with me. Now, if you expect me to sell my property to you, and you do not, you, you tell me that you'll do it, you'll do it, you'll do it, and not one will come back and tell me, even go talk to them.
That, who are these employees?
One was Paul, the, over the engineering. One was Diane McGuire, and the engineer that came out with her. The other was Jared, and he said, "We will." I believe it was Rochelle with, with them. And they, they have not got back to me at all. You, you just push, push, push us and won't answer our questions. They did say they will do part of the ditch, the earth ditch. They've been good to work with, but they haven't done what they said. I'm not putting them down, but they haven't done what they said they'd do. And one thing that very upset me was you three. Last time we was at a meeting for the West Weber part of this, in your agenda, people supposed to be given three minutes to speak at the end of your meeting. I, I took four hours out of my time to come speak, and you would not. We've got another meeting, we've got to go to, so your three minutes was worth a lot more than my four hours.
I just wanna take a minute, carry and thank Rochelle.
Hey, Randy, I'm sorry, but if you're gonna talk, you do need to come to the microphone, sorry.
I just want, just, just wanna take a minute and thank Jared, Holland, Rochelle, and even yourself. I've had health problems in my family, as you well know, and they've been really synthetic, but, you know, really nice to us about that, not bothering and stuff. I just wanna thank everybody.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else on Twelfth Street that would like to comment? Come on up, Carissa. I, I got one more time, I can say good morning, and then I'm gonna have to say good afternoon.
It's actually Carissa.
Arisa.
Heaps, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
So I'm here to make a statement, just because our situation's a little different than everyone else. We're set back about as far as you can be on Twelfth Street. And so we don't have concerns with the actual effects. It will have on our property, it's a strip of dirt, and we get that. So we've been asked, then why are you having issues, why do you have opinions, why don't you just sign and be done with it, it doesn't really affect you? And we'd just like to say it does affect us, it affects our community and our neighbors, it affects how it feels to drive down our community, it's a really big deal. And we appreciate living in a country where we can oppose what you're doing, and so we respectfully oppose what you're doing. We've talked, our, we have half of our children who are married, and half who still live at home. We've followed the project very closely, we've tried to be fair in what we read and understand, and tried to listen to everyone's opinions in a medium place, and not get too upset about it. And we have to say that there are several versions of a project we could have and would have supported. We feel like this is way over the top, that it could have been done in phases, that to come in and say for safety, we'll give you some shoulders, and then turn it into this acquisition, that's going to be such a big deal, that it's just really unfair. We feel like we should have been involved in the process from the beginning. I'm sure you did all of your talking and deciding behind closed doors. But like Anna said, if you'd had us on board from the beginning, been part of the process of what are the concerns? What are our options, what can we do? That I think you would have had most people on board. And I feel like as they're understanding more, as you've been willing to give more information, people are cooperating more. And you said you've learned from that, but we kinda are the ones who got hurt in the process. So don't blame us for where we are in all of this. It's really hard to trust and understand, where we feel like we were just kinda broadsided. We believe, as we've been talking as a family, that in your efforts to look forward-thinking, like you talked about, that we are the sacrificial lambs, you're looking right past us. And those people are friends and neighbors who live along this road, who are being affected so negatively. I wish you could have seen when the stakes were in everybody's front lawns for about two months, and you drive down the corridor, and maybe it just looked like you could envision the road when you drove down, but we know every single person who lives in every single house, and we could picture where that road would be, and how close it was to their door, how they would back out of their driveways, where their children would play. It's been very upsetting, very difficult to, you know, process what you've decided to do and how you've decided to do it. And the disorganization, miscommunication, and lack of transparency, if it wasn't us, would be so ridiculous and laughable. It's just been a comedy of errors, somebody said. But I have to say, when you know the individual people, and how devastating and heartbreaking the consequences of this process has been to those people, it's really difficult to watch, really difficult to be a part of. So to give Jared an answer, 'cause he called again and said, "Do you have any questions?", and no, we don't. And, and we're not in communication, and we're not going to be, and I want you to know why. So that's why I'm here today. Because of the scary close proximity to our friends and neighbors' homes, and our own priorities and values, we have decided that we cannot in good conscience support, condone, or voluntarily cooperate in any way with the acquisition of a hundred-foot right-of-way. So we will not be signing a contract. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on the, on the right-of-way, or on the Twelfth Street project would like to speak?
I'd just like to say one thing, you're gonna be known as the Commissioners of Eminent Domain.
My question then to you is, if not here, then where? Where should we put another east-west corridor? What are your thoughts? Whose property should we take?
I'd like to address that, Andrew.
I frankly, it won't do any good, Commissioner, because the reality is, it's, it's anywhere but, but mine. And the problem is, is that there's really been no, there's really no additional thought given, other than not in my backyard, and not, not now, not ever. So the problem, the problem that we have here is, we are faced with, with tough decisions, and that's why we're here. We have to make them, and, and sometimes we have to take cheap shots. And, and the reality is, we've taken our share today. But, but the fact of the matter is, I'm just gonna make a, a final statement before I vote, you can make any that you'd like. You know, I, it was mentioned that, that we all know each other, the reality is, I, I feel the exact same way. I know this is a hard project to deal with. I know every single person on this corridor, just like each and every one of you do, and they are my neighbors, and it hurts me to see them affected in a negative manner. I also have to come to grips with what I believe is the right thing to do in this particular case. And the fact of the matter is, there are so many reasons, so many of you even in this very room that have asked me since the minute that I went into public office to fix this road. Now, I realize that you may not love the way that it's being done, and unfortunately, a lot of times, process gets blamed for the fact that no matter what process we use, we're not gonna be happy about it. I get that, I understand it. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't try and fix the process, because we're gonna do everything we can to address these challenges. But the fact of the matter is, this road is a hazard in so many ways, it is not safe the way it is, we have got to fix it. We made that decision in an open meeting many, many months ago, and we are going to proceed to make that happen in the best way that we know how, and the best way that we can address it. I, I am very, very sorry for those of you who feel as though we haven't had your best interest in heart. I know you're well, you, you're entitled to your opinion. I, I am saddened by it, but yet nonetheless, am resolute that, that as we have challenges that come before us, we have to have the courage and the strength to go forward and do the things that we believe are right and correct. In this particular case, I'm hoping that our staff will pay attention to the suggestions that will be, that have been made, that they will make adjustments as going forward, even though those come to, seem to come back and bite us at times too, because then we get accused of changing the story. But the reality is, we're trying very, very hard to hear and understand the concerns, as was expressed with the speed limit. We'll continue to do that as we move forward. But in the meantime, to say that, that I can put my head in the sand and say, "Hey, we don't need to fix this road," I, I just can't do it, guys. It, it's not, it's not in the cards, this is way past due. It's, it's long, long past due. I think frankly, the fact that the county has not acted more definitively in the past to address both of these transportation projects, thirty-five hundred west and Twelfth Street, have been sad to me. That they have let that discussion get, be put to the back burner for so long. So, you know, my intent and my hope is to, is to move forward. Hope and pray that, that some of you will, will see our opinion, at least somewhat, as we move forward. And if we don't, then, you know, that's, that's the great thing about, about where we live, as, as Mrs. Heap said, you'll have the opportunity to, to take it out on me in, in a couple of years at the ballot box. That's, that's the way it works. But the reality is, I hope that you understand that, that my intention here is, is to do what I believe is correct for our entire community, not just each and every one of you, but all of our community. And, and we're just gonna do the best that we can as we move forward, and hope that you can see that, that we're trying at least to make progress in what we're doing here. I appreciate each and every one of you for coming and sharing your concerns today. Just remember, I think I pointed this out last time, but if you were sitting, if this was a state road, you would not have had this opportunity. Eminent domain action would have been taken in an office somewhere in Salt Lake, and you would have not had this opportunity to vent, to ask questions, to call your commissioners' names, whatever it is you wanna do. You wouldn't have had this opportu, opportunity. I think it's a good opportunity, it's extremely hard for us, because we want to do the right thing, we want to make everyone happy. That's obviously not the case, but we, we, we have talked about this, we, we have hoped that we would have, that we would do, go above and beyond when taking an eminent domain action. Above and beyond any reasonable requirement offered by the state. And we have tried to do that throughout this process, and including today. So, so you can label us however you want, Mr. Davis, and, and you have that right to do so. But, but my hope and prayer again is that, is that those labels will be tempered with, with a sense of, of understanding, that we really are trying to do what we think is the right thing to do in this particular case, so. Commissioners, anything you wanna add before we take action?
Really quickly, Mr. Davis, I appreciate that you came back. If I said something that frustrated you to the point where you weren't able to stay here and express your, your, use your freedom of speech and express your opinions, I, I expressed my fundamental apology for that, that's not what I meant to do. I get a little animated also. I don't mind animated conversations, I think it's good and healthy. We get our real feelings out, but hopefully we can respect each other at the end of the day. If as a county, we can do a better job on these type of projects, we want the input. And whether it's drainage ditches, or better appraisals, or adjusting speed limits, or having better qualified people come out to do those appraisals, whether it's holding people accountable, we want to hear about it. The project itself is a needed project, and it will have impacts on citizens, and we understand that. We're in a difficult decision, we continue to look towards the future. This is one of the problems that we have in this county. And we have lost our position along the Wasatch Front, because we have not made difficult decisions to push our communities forward, to help strengthen them, to provide strong infrastructure for them. And that's what we're trying to do. We identified a long time ago that our east-west corridors are, are going to be a problem. We identified a long time ago that we want to maintain an agricultural lifestyle. So we have to plan for that, and we have to create the infrastructure to build around it, whether it's community development that brings rooftops, that don't use a tremendous amount of space, allowing us to have open space in our agricultural land, and we, and maintain those agricultural roots, then we need to take those steps to accomplish that. And that's what we're trying to do. So at the end of the day, what I hope that you feel is that you've had open firsthand communication, and you understand what we're trying to do. And we will continue to maintain communication with your specific and issues, with your specific and issues and problems to try to address them. We can't guarantee everything, but we'll work to resolve them. I hope that you have heard that we're, we're attempting to do that. So I, I appreciate that you came here, and I appreciate that you expressed your concerns and issues, and whether it was up here at the pulpit or in the back, we were hearing them. And we're gonna try to create a process that is a little more open to you for, as far as communication, and makes you feel like you're part of the process. So again, if I have said something was frustrating to you, stay behind, and we'll talk about it. And we may not come to resolution, but we'll at least have an open, honest, non-politician conversation about it. And that's probably my biggest weakness, is I'm a very good politician, as far as just telling you what, what you want to hear, and then not following up on what we talked about. It's going to be open dialogue, so thank you for coming.
So as we, as we look at roads, you know, I, I don't remember, of course, when things were changed out on Harrison Boulevard back in the day, but there's houses that are right on the road, and I can imagine they had the same feeling as you folks are having today. I drive that road to work all the time, and it's packed. I don't care if it's in the morning or the afternoon, it's a packed street. I'm not sure what the speed limit is on that street, but it wouldn't really matter, because you can only go so fast, 'cause there's so many, so much traffic on that street. And, and that was done, someone somewhere along the line made the decision that that road needed to be widened. It was a two-lane road, for some reason, it's a four-lane road now. And I look at that, my responsibility is to look ahead in the county, as Commissioner Ebert said. There may be been some times when a lot of the forward-thinking hasn't been looked ahead, we've just sat right in our little silo. Weber County used to be the, the, the county with all the folks in here, the banking people, the Browning people, they all lived here in Weber County, they all up and left, and went a little further south. And we want Weber County to come back, and to be that powerhouse, and be the economic drivers up here, and so we have gotta look ahead. And so as, as county commissioners, we've got really involved in this economic development, and it's important and that we move that forward. And the way we do it is, we have infrastructure for the citizens and for people to come in. We're not the run, people that are running the businesses, we're not the ones that own the properties, as you do. Some day, someone may wanna subdivide your property and put something on it, houses, something else, I don't know. But it's your property to be able to- But it's your property to be able to do those things with and we want to make sure the infrastructure is in place to be able to get to those places. So. Intimate domain is the very last thing that I ever, ever wanted to do as a commissioner. The very last thing. And it's where we are today and I feel like we need to move forward and this is a project. We've looked at it. We've, it's a project we need to move forward. So, thank you.
Okay, we'll take these one by one, commissioners.
Commissioner Gibson, just before we take action on the sixteenth street resolution, Compass Minerals has signed a contract. We need to delete that owner from the resolution. That's number thirteen.
So let's take these one by one. We'll begin with item number fourteen, which is the resolution regarding the Skyline Drive reconstruction. That would be resolution number what, Fatima?
We did that one.
Do we do Skyline? Okay. Okay, forty-three. So item number five, that's on the thirty-five-hundred West reconstruction. That would be number forty-three. Commissioners, would you like to take action?
I'll make a motion that we sign a resolution between Weber County approving eminent domain as necessary on thirty-five-hundred West. Number forty-three.
Second.
Okay, motion and second, discussion. We've had a lot of that. Roll call vote, Fatima?
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. It passes unanimously. Item number six, on the Twelfth Street project upgrades. I won't read it again, but that's the resolution before us. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution forty-four. The county commission of Weber County approving proceeding in eminent domains as necessary for Twelfth Street excluding number thirteen Compass Minerals.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second before us. Is there discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
The motion passes. Next on our agenda is a request for approval of contract binding between Weber County and Grant McKay for their economic development in Weber County. That's a little bit
Yeah.
of an odd description there, Sean.
Yeah, just a little bit misleading. This is a, a contract for the demolition of a structure out at the county sheriff's complex where the future juvenile detention center will be going. So the contract is for forty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars for demolition of that building.
Okay.
I can answer any questions if any of the commissioners have any on it.
I'm aware of the project. Any questions from you?
Contract three ninety-one.
What contract number?
Three ninety-one.
I make a motion that we accept contract three ninety-one between Weber County and McKay, Grant McKay for the demolition of a building on the sheriff's complex.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second then to approve and adopt contract number three ninety-one, which is item number seven on our agenda. I won't read it out again. Any further discussion to that motion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Item number eight is a request for discussion and our action on a request for final approval of the chalais at Ski Lake Phase Eight, a cluster subdivision of sixteen lots at sixty-three-hundred East Quail Hollow, including a financial guarantee for subdivision improvements in the amount of sixty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars. This approval also includes the county survey manuf- monumentation improvement agreement. And Sean, you taking this for Jim?
Yes, I am. Commissioners, this is the final phase of the chalais at Ski Lake subdivision. Like you mentioned, there is a subdivision improvement agreement as well as a survey monumentation improvement agreement. All of the requirements have been met and we recommend approval at this time.
Any questions?
Nope.
So do we need a contract number on this or just an approval? Yeah, seeing none, I'll ask for...
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve final approval of the chalet at Ski Lake Phase Eight.
I'll second it. Any more questions on that? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
We'll go to number nine. Scott here?
He's on his way.
Okay, can we?
He's just down the hall.
Okay, can we just take about a one-minute break? Okay, we're, we're going to just take a, a couple-minute recess. I've been drinking cups of water all day, so. Give us a couple minutes, we'll be right back.
Start, Hollen or Fatima? We good to go?
Let's do it.
Yes.
I'll turn the chair back over to you, Commissioner Gibson.
Okay, we're to item... Number nine, we didn't take an official action to saunter, did we? We just kind of sauntered.
We just sauntered.
So back to item number nine, request for approval of Weber County twenty-sixteen tentative budget. Scott?
Okay, I'm actually on the agenda twice with number nine and number ten. Number ten is the presentation of the interim financial report. If you're okay with it, I'd like to go out of order just so we can talk about where we are and where we're going.
Absolutely. Sounds good.
Okay, so if you pull out the interim financial report, I'll keep it brief. Our revenues are about where we expect them to be for this time of year. Our expenditures are about where we expect them to be for this time of the year with two exceptions. One is the district court mental health evaluations. We are going to go over budget. We, we're at ninety-nine percent of the budget right now. We're going to go over. We have, we have savings in other areas we'll be able to use to offset this. But I just want to let you know that we don't really have any control over those. Those are court mandated, so we pay what they tell us to pay. The other area of, of concern is our animal shelter. We are going to go over budget and the contributions we make to the animal shelter. They changed a little bit of the way they do their billing and so everybody, including Weber County and all the cities that use the animal shelter, have to pay a little bit more. We will also be able to cover that with savings in other areas. Other than that, you have the report in front of you. If you want to review it offline and ask any specific questions, I'm happy to take those. If not, that is the interim financial report. Hopefully that's quick enough.
It's quick enough. I just will point out that given the, the length of the day and the constraints in front of us as well, you probably won't have a lot of questions from us, but we, you know, we have been dealing with this budget now for what, three months, four months? As we, as we work forward and so, and we'll continue, this is a tentative budget. And so we'll pass a final budget here in a couple of weeks, but, but I just don't want to leave the impression that, that we're not engaged here because we're extremely engaged in the process.
I completely understand and we've had a lot of good discussions offline. Let me just go over quickly the tentative budget. It's available online. Anybody who wants to see it, it's on our main page. We have until the seventeenth. Give me any feedback that they have on it, any comments. We'll incorporate that in our public hearing. Really quickly, we expect about three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars of new property tax revenue, four hundred sixty thousand dollars of new sales tax revenue. We're going to fund a couple of capital projects, twelve million for the library, twenty-nine million for various transportation projects that are approved through WACOG. But the one thing I wanted to take, if I just have thirty seconds to talk about, is the cost of healthcare. From what we expect twenty fifteen expenditures to the twenty, excuse me, what we expect in twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen, we're expecting about a one-point-two-million-dollar increase in the cost of healthcare. That's dental and health insurance, that's twelve-point-six percent. That is way more than our new growth. The county is one of the few in the state that continues to pay one-hundred percent of the cost of the employee premiums. And if we have another year like this, we will not be able to do that without either increasing taxes or significant cuts in services in other areas. So we're going to need to look at either reducing the benefits or having the employees share in a portion. It's just not something we can sustain going forward. Just to give you an idea, in two thousand and ten, we paid about six million in healthcare. Two thousand and sixteen, we're going to pay eight-point-seven. It's a forty-six percent increase. That's enough to give every employee a COLA every year from two thousand and ten to now. And that's all going into healthcare. So the employees are getting the benefit from that, but they don't see it in their paychecks.
Right.
So we're, we're going to be able to fund this increase this year. I'm worried if we have another increase like this next time, we're not going to be able to cover it. But in order to fund it this year though, what we had to do is ask all the departments to go through and do a one percent cut on their budgets. So every department received that information. They're working through their budgets right now to see where they can cut one percent, but that's going to allow us to fund this healthcare cost for this year. But what that also means is where there's not any additional money for merits or COLAs in twenty sixteen in this tentative budget.
Okay, I think it's important that we talk about that for a minute because, you know, we've had some, some concerns as rumors have kind of circled around the county about that increase in cost. And then I will just remind everyone, I think it's been pointed out, most people in this state understand this, but this so-called Affordable Care Act is extremely unaffordable to local governments, to individuals. It's turned into something that has truly become unsustainable and, and we are seeing it on the front lines. We, you know, it, it's not an excuse for us. It's a reality that we cannot continue to provide the type, the level of contribution to employees' healthcare under the type of increases that we're seeing under, under the ACA. And so I'm hoping, I'm hoping that, that individuals understand that and, and understand that we're doing everything we can. We're faced with a challenge here today of, of maybe having to cut back that contribution. We've decided to try and find another way to do it. But that, as you said, Scott, that can't go on for long. And, you know, unfortunately, we've got to be prepared for that new reality.
You know, I will add, we are having to delay some capital equipment purchases. We're having to delay maintenance. We're having to, to put off things that we really should do, you know, it'd be cheaper to do today than it's going to be tomorrow, but we're going to have, we're having to do that. We're making those decisions now. And so you know, this is probably the last year, I, unless something changes, I don't see how we can continue to do this going forward.
Agreed. Okay, go ahead and move on.
That's all I have. So I'm going to present to you the twenty-sixteen tentative budget for your approval.
Commissioners, any discussion or questions?
Well, I just think that, that it needs to be noted that we have spent hundreds of hours going through this budget and I think we got a pretty good grip on what's in there. And I think our, as Commissioner Gibson said, it's our healthcare. Our healthcare and our benefits. We have employees in the county that half their wages, they make wage and then the other half what we pay them is in benefits. Benefits are extremely expensive and we need to have good quality people here. And so there's going to be some, we're going to have to be working on things as we're working down, as we're growing in this county, as we're doing different projects. So. Thanks, Scott. I know you've been, you've been, he's been heavily tasked. We're in the process of putting in a new computer system that's going to help with our finances, that we've spent quite a bit of money on that and Scott is working on that. And besides that, he had to put together a budget that we can get to this point. So the folks have been really busy back in Ricky's office getting ready for that. This new computer system is so slick that it'll give you breakfast when you want to kick out your numbers.
Not quite that slick, but...
Okay, but almost. Compared to where we are, we've been doing a lot of double-doing and things. And so I appreciate all that you're doing on that and I appreciate you getting the numbers in order for us. And, thank you.
Okay. All right, any action you'd like to take then on the two items? We'll start with item number nine, which was the approval of the twenty-sixteen tentative budget.
Make a motion, we approve the two thousand and sixteen tentative.
Okay.
I second it.
Motion and second, discussion. Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote on that one, just to make sure since it's the budget.
Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. The motion passes. And to item number ten, the presentation, we don't need to take action on that one, do we? That's just a presentation item. Okay, so moving on to our last item, public comment. Is there any from the public who would like to comment? Okay, we'll move on to our final item, the assignment of the pledge of allegiance and thought of the day. Pledge of allegiance will be assigned by Shelley, or excuse me, thought of the day will be assigned by Shelley. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Shelley. I like it. She's very helpful. Thank you.
It's probably Gibson for the thought of the day again, I think. I think it's been a while since he's...
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Oh, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Do we still need the closed session today?
Oh yeah, we're having a closed session.
Okay, sixty seconds for a closed session, so that's the motion I need.
I'll make a motion, we go into closed session.
Second. But...
To talk about...
Land acquisition of liability. To pending or imminent litigation.
And where will that be held?
Right behind us, right here in the room.
For sixty seconds.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
It is a roll call. Commissioner Bell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ebert?
Aye.
Chair Gibson?
Aye. We'll be back to close the meeting. It's gonna have to come upstairs. Okay, we're back in our, oh, we're waiting for Fatima, then we're gonna be back.
Okay.
Okay, we're back in our open meeting in the closed session. No decisions were made, no action was taken. So we're back here to close our meeting, and I need a final motion.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
All in favor?
Say aye.
Aye.